Recording.
Oh, I didn't realize we had to break recordings. Okay, so we're now moving on to our discussion of fireworks. And I think I had missed that one day when this was actually put on as a work session.
Yeah, and this is an annual update that we do after the Fourth of July. So Max Booth, our Chief Building Official, and Curtis Evanston, interim Fire Marshal, I believe will be presenting, and I know April Firth is also here in the room.
Okay, so let's go ahead and who's going to start us off? You're setting the dress code here. Please send your case yourselves.
Go ahead, Curtis.
Okay. Curtis Evanston, interim Fire Marshal as of late July this year. We're going to present to you our... Okay, we're going to present to you our actions on fireworks this year.
And I'm Max Booth, I'm the Chief Building Official. I was the interim Fire Marshal during the Fourth of July this year. So Curtis and I helped compile this information together, which is basically a compilation of many of the questions we received via email from the council and others related to statistics, impacts, and the use of fireworks here in the county, so.
So the data that we're going to present is estimated revenue, expenses, costs associated with the sales used in response to fireworks, call volume, fires associated with fireworks, comparison to previous years, and enforcement. Next slide is fireworks code. What we have here, the piece of code that says that if you're going to modify fireworks law here in Clark County, that it becomes effective a year from the date that you adopt it. So just so you know that, if you choose to make a change, it's a year away. This form below shows current discharge times that are legal in Clark County, and it varies from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. Our estimated revenue and expenses and costs associated with the sales used in response to fireworks for 2023. We had forty permits issued. We collected $4,000 in permit fees. That's $100 per permit, and that fee is capped by the state. We can't charge more. That's the limit that we can charge for a permit. The figure to the right, $5,772, is what we collected for the tent permits. The majority of the fireworks sales in this county occur out of a tent. Some occur out of a hard stand that they construct. But we do get a permit for that because we have to look at the way that tent is fastened to the ground, prevent it from flying away in winds, the flame retardant nature of it, and the floor plan that they have sufficient exits and emergency lighting. So that's what that fee covers, or those inspections. Estimated gross sales reported this year for fireworks. We had two supply... We reached out to the suppliers. We had two come back to us with a figure. And supplier one had a retail figure of $2.37 million, supplier two, $2 million. Those two suppliers account for thirty of the forty stands that we permitted this year. Two of the forty stands that we permitted did not open. They went through the permit process to hold their permit, but they did not actually open a stand. Here's the estimated cost to the county for our staff hours to deal with fireworks. Fireworks sales lottery and other admin was forty hours for $9.52. Permit services was forty hours for $1,087. Fire marshal permit reviews took twelve hours for $6.2592. Firework stand inspections was $48 a staff time for $2,055. Fire investigation for structure fires involving the fireworks was twenty-five hours at $1,051368. Our fire districts also really have costs to dealing with fireworks as well. And the total for that was $181,709. That's for their upstaffing that they have to do to be able to respond to all the calls created by fireworks.
And just to jump in, the number on the screen says 134. We received some information after we had completed this slide, so $181,000 was the number represented by, I believe, four districts who responded. There could be some other costs from the districts that didn't respond, so... But that was four of the largest districts in the county, so.
Okay. So the call volume. This particular slide shows that there were forty-eight calls responded to in Clark County between June 28th and July 4th. That is a little bit misleading in that CRESSA this year created a nuisance line. Actually, I believe they did it last year also, that takes the heat off of the 911 operators there. It provided a number for people to call if they just had a nuisance report for fireworks noise. So a lot of those calls were diverted to that line and dealt with at that level. Some of them may have risen back up and been sent to 911 based on what triage occurred at that other level.
And Curtis, the forty-eight calls, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm pretty sure was calls that resulted in CRESSA dispatching somebody or creating a case to respond to.
So these calls that you're referring to, were they exclusively outside the allowed use time?
Not necessarily. It included the fourth and...
Do we have that separated out for... To kind of isolate those that are violating the existing law?
Good question, thank you, Counselor. Do not believe we have those isolated out for two reasons. We could probably get a bit more information on that. What you have here with the forty-eight calls were calls that warranted law enforcement or medical response, whether or not the fireworks were being used lawfully or not. This was just a pure impact statistic on injury, fire, damage happening because of fireworks usage. The calls that are related to unlawful discharge mainly would be diverted to that nuisance line, was created for non-emergency type nuisance calls because 911 in years past got overloaded with phone calls, many of which were not something law enforcement could respond to. And so that line, we'd probably have to get CRESSA's feedback on that, doesn't make a distinction between calls... I should say, they don't document the distinction between calls that were made outside of hours and during hours. There's all sorts of reasons that could be called for that. They may have some more information on that. I do know that that phone line, for at least some period of the time from June 20th to July 5th, was sent to a recording, which was checked periodically, and it wasn't a live answer the entire time either, which then also kind of further muddies the water to be able to tell which for which.
So fires associated with fireworks during 2023. We have one, two, three, six major fires that occurred in Clark County on the 2023 season. Several of those were caused by fireworks into vegetation that then spread to the residents. Others were improper disposal of fireworks debris. They didn't take the steps necessary to soak those properly before they... And then put them near their house. They rekindled and then spread to the home and into the... To the residents. We had no injuries that occurred from those, but the total estimated damage was $950,000 for those fires.
Could I ask a question on that?
Yes.
Because I know one of the homes that burned, it's on my commute into work here, and I'm just wondering how you estimate the cost of the damage, because that was a total replacement of what was a two-story house to now a one-story.
Correct. At the time, when the fire investigator does his report, we have an estimating tool that we use that has a certain number of square foot cost associated with it, and we punch in the percentage of damage from fire and smoke, and it generates this cost for us.
Right. The real cost, though, to the...
The real cost could be much more.
Much higher.
It really could.
Thank you.
We are generally low on our estimations on those.
It's similar to insurance claims suggesting if half the house burned down, they're going to give you a number for half the house, but in reality, you might have to rebuild more than half the house to get it back to its pre-loss condition.
And it's not just the structure, it's the contents. Everything in your home is affected in some way when you have a structure fire like that.
And in this particular home, there are a number of cats that they were fostering or rehabbing that all had smoke inhalation and required some hefty vet bills.
Okay, so I almost got to weigh in here. I... Too bad the chair is not here, because I know she had raised this issue when the initial reports were coming in, in the papers and elsewhere, that, you know, there were fire caused by fireworks. The concern, and I summarized that in an early email with the preliminary report, and that was just from yours, not... I'm not... I think you were the interim at the time. It didn't include Vancouver's Fire Marshal report as well. So the first question is, do we have now a completed Fire Marshal report from Vancouver that you've reviewed and is available?
Those figures are out there. I don't particularly...
You don't, okay.
Available for you today, but I can get that for you.
Okay, so the summary of my basic email was, hey, let's treat this like an arson investigation, you know? Forensic evaluation. How do we know it was fireworks? How do we know that? And was it negligent use? Is it criminal? Was it treated as an arson? And when you start burning down homes, and people use fireworks, and we had that experience a couple of years ago where someone deliberately shot fireworks into a house and burned it down.
Yes.
Do you remember that case?
We do.
So, I mean, how much work was done? I mean, are these absolute, clear-cut, simple, yeah, fireworks started these fires? There's no other cause? And there's no criminal element here? This is simple negligence, not something that's gross negligence or... Can we get a little bit more detail? I mean, is alcohol involved, drugs and alcohol? I mean, what are the causes of these six fires you've outlined here?
I would suspect that if, when I read the report, the investigator's words are going to say most probable. Okay, there's levels of certainty in these investigations that we deal with. It could be conclusive. Next level would be most probable. Next level would be possible. When we get into that range, we're undetermined on a cause. But given what the fire investigator was seeing on the scene, he equated what he was seeing with, yes, this fire started in this landscape material. We had multiple reports of fireworks being shot all over the neighborhood. It is most probable that this was fallout from a firework that caused the fire. The ones where we had improper disposal, very convincing when you find this is the point of origin, and at the point of origin, we find the remains of exposed fireworks that were consumed to the point where they... There was no way these things were ever soaked in water. It's... You use the scientific method, and you come back to this was the cause at those levels of probability and...
So basically, your summary is that all six were pretty clear, and all of it was related to simple negligence? I mean, nothing got referred to the sheriff's office for criminal investigation?
It was not... None of them were found to be intentionally caused.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
Just piggybacking on that, is anything referred to sheriff's office in the event that we know it's an illegal firework that caused it?
If we knew that was the case, and we knew who fired the illegal firework, that's the other piece is who fired it? You know, do we have it on video, somebody showing this firework, leaving this person's hand, and going to that point? You would have to have that piece of it as well, and it's not highly likely that you would do that when there's people up and down the street discharging fireworks. It depends on what information we get. When we're on the scene, if we're able to put that together, we would certainly take that action.
And a follow-up to that, meaning illegal in that it was used outside an appropriate time, I mean, there's... There's... I mean, talking M-80s, cherry bombs, firecrackers. I mean, the mortars and other incendiaries are readily available.
Correct.
So...
And legal. What I believe the counselor's referring to is maybe bottle rockets, skyrockets, things that aren't legal for sale in Clark County. Those type of devices. If we found evidence of that, in these cases, I don't believe we did, but that would be followed up on appropriately.
So the fires you investigated was by legal fireworks?
The ones... I can say the one that I investigated was certainly indicative of legal fireworks. What I found for remains are very small fragments of the tubes that form a cake-type firework. You've seen the square boxes with multiple tubes in it that fire flaming balls into the air and the different effects. That was basically what I had for remains, were several of those. And there's a little clay plug in the bottom of those tubes that still remains, even if it burns to completion and everything is ash. Those clay plugs will still be there as evidence of what was at that point of origin. So that answers your question. Okay, so the next slide we have here is fires associated with fireworks for vegetation fires where there was no structure damage occurring. Now, these fires come in at such a rate on the Fourth that there's no realistic way that we can investigate these fires, because the fire crews are running from putting out a fire, to putting out a fire, to putting out a fire, to putting out a fire. And so we took a snapshot of July 15th back to June 25th to show you the incidents of those types of fires, and you can certainly see a correlation that on the Fourth, there's a large spike as far as vegetation fires caused the fireworks.
So these are from all causes, not just fireworks?
These are just vegetation fires that occurred in this time frame. And... But it does show a correlation to right around the Fourth, we have a large spike in these numbers.
That is correct. These are uninvestigated fires, so they could be caused by anything, which is... The purpose of the chart here is to say, for whatever reason, on the Fourth of July, many more of them seem to start.
And does this include all fires that even aren't suppressed by the fire department? So homeowner sees a fire, puts it out with a hose, then they call the fire department?
Any reported fire that fire responded on is covered in these numbers.
These just capture actual responses? There may have been many more?
Yes, could be. Okay. Next slide is year by year, the number of vegetation fires reported, also the number of fireworks-related investigations for the entire year. Fairly consistent throughout. Until you get to this year, we had 186. I believe that we probably... This is just speculation on my part, that the year that we banned fireworks because of the dry weather, I believe that was 2021, I'm not mistaken, you know? We had sixty-two still reported that year, and there were no fireworks. Had we had fireworks that year, I bet you would have seen a similar number to what we had this year. The weather conditions were similar. We hadn't quite gotten to the point where we could come to Chair and say, would you like to ban the fireworks this year? You've met all the criteria. We were bumping up against it, but we hadn't got there yet. So similar conditions, but not to the point where you could have taken action to do that.
And can you just give a little bit more detail on that so the public understands? Because, you know, we get a lot of emails.
Sure.
Fire hazard, ban fireworks. But there is a structure to it. There's criteria that you mentioned, and then it goes to the manager and the chair at the time that makes the ultimate call, because, I mean, you're deviating from code by canceling fireworks, at least at this time. Can you just explain that process a little? What is the criteria and how that process works?
We can't. I don't have the actual numbers in front of me that you have to attain, but there's fuel moisture levels in the county, have to reach a certain point. The... Anywhere in the county is classified as extreme fire danger. And the third one is a energy release component. There's a figure that's brought together from all sorts of other fuel moisture level numbers that you work on a percentile, and I believe, Max, it's the 90th percentile?
Correct.
If you reach that energy release component in that range, that's the third component you need, and...
The numbers are reported on by DNR at the state level, and what they're basically measuring is how wet the fuel is and how much fuel there is, to put it in, you know, as simple terms as possible. And so they've got certain benchmarks that are in the code with regard to what those levels must be at, and once they reach those levels, then the Fire Marshal can approach the Chair of the Council, who makes the decision on this as to whether or not to proceed with the fireworks for that year. But as the code sits now, until you reach those criteria, those benchmarks set forth in the code, apart from a legislative action, there can't even really be a discussion about banning them for that year. And that, again, is just a ban for that year based on conditions on the ground, so to speak, so.
Real quick, before we move on, I'm kind of not quite understanding the large jump. Why it jumped so much in 2023 versus the previous four years?
Well, thank you for the question, Counselor. The answer is, is we don't really know. I mean, there's a lot of speculation as to why it would be. Most likely, the large jump had to do with the dry weather conditions this year. As Curtis mentioned, this year was on track to be a similar year to 2021, when we actually did go forward with banning them due to the dry weather conditions, having met all the criteria we just mentioned. So 2021, had we not banned them that year, our speculation is it would have looked a lot like this year at 180 or whatever the number is. So this year, we weren't quite there, but we got there, what, the 15th of July or... It was shortly thereafter, a couple of weeks after we reached those numbers. So that's our speculation. Previous years were most likely wetter years. 2020 had pandemic-related considerations that, I mean, I don't really know which way it would have gone, but there's a lot of factors year to year. The vegetation fires, again, are total number of vegetation fires that are reported, not necessarily related to fireworks, although there seems to be a correlation with the numbers of them that happened around the Fourth of July. So I think the better statistic here is the... Better is maybe a wrong word to use it, though. More consistent statistic would be the structure fire, which is the investigations number, and those seem are relatively consistent year to year.
And so I... Now you've teed off some other questions. The criteria, is that our criteria? Do other counties create their own criteria? Do they all operate under state criteria? I mean, is anyone reconsidering adjusting that criteria? So it's a little bit more conservative or protective of the fire conditions? Where does that code come from? I guess it's ours, is it the state's?
Correct. John Dunaway, who was Fire Marshal at the time that this... Those criteria was set forth, he, I believe, modeled it after maybe Thurston County, one of the other counties up north that had had similar criteria set forth. I can get that detail for you, the history on that, because I wasn't involved in that piece of it at the time as much as I have been lately, but I can certainly research that for you and let you know where we modeled after.
The short answer, too, to your question is that that's definitely in Clark County code, and it is drawing from, as Curtis said, other jurisdictions who've done similar things, and it is heavily reliant on DNR data. There could be other places to obtain the data.
I'm seeing out of my periphery, April nodding her head. So this is a whole nother area that we could look at, other than just safe and sane and changing fireworks. I mean, this is a whole nother criteria that would, you know, be controlled mainly or monitored by the Fire Marshal as to what the conditions... I mean, I can imagine Eastern Washington has... A lot of counties there would have very different criteria than what Olympia would have in the rainforest.
Right.
Anyway, so did you have a question?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up on that as well. So it is within the county's purview to change that if we wanted to change that, make it more or less restrictive? And then, once it's in the code, I'm just wondering about flexibility and if, well, if we're kind of really close, you know, how much flexibility? Maybe there's no flexibility once you have it in the code, and maybe that would warrant being more conservative in making the call.
Thank you for the question, Counselor. The... It's well-stated, it's a good question. So as it sits now, there's no flexibility until you've met the criteria, okay? So until you've met it, the Chair can't just decide to ban the fireworks until the criteria has been met. However, the Chair still has, as the code's written now, the ability to not ban fireworks after you've exceeded the criteria. It's the other way around. So to answer your question, if you made the number more conservative, the Chair, as it's worded now, not to say that couldn't also be adjusted to include the total council's opinion or whatever, but as it sits now, or if you adjusted it more conservatively, you'd still have the option at that point to not ban them on a given year, even after you've exceeded the numbers. That gets tricky. You know, the whole idea is to make it more objective and less subjective, so... Then it's your question?
Which is good, but... So it's the Chair of the council who has the authority to make the decision, not the council. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes. So the way it's worded, and April might know this off the top of her head, but the way it's worded right now is the Fire Marshal, in conjunction with or in coordination with the Chair, can then opt to ban them after you've met the criteria. I think that's how it's worded.
Yeah, so that's new to me. I didn't know that the Chair could actually... I mean, I knew it was, you either met the criteria or not, but I didn't know the Chair could overrule that or just basically ignore that. It's never come up, obviously, but it could. And I would say that's probably needs some adjustment in light of the charter change just a couple of years ago. You know, now the Chair is not an at-large elected separate office. So the role has changed a bit because of the charter change. You should probably look at that code.
So I just pulled up the code. It's 5.28.055, and it does say the Clark County Council Chair, after consulting with the Fire Marshal, may prohibit the discharge and sale of all fireworks during periods of extreme fire danger. For purposes of this chapter, the term extreme fire danger shall mean a period of hot, dry weather accompanied by low fuel moistures. And then it continues on with the criteria with the burning index, the fuel moisture, and the energy release. But we can certainly put that on a future council time if you want to look at updating that to have some sort of flexibility that, you know, maybe it will hit the criteria two days after the Fourth, so we want to be, you know, have more caution moving into it, but we can certainly bring that.
How many more slides do you have?
One more.
Okay, go ahead, go. I didn't want to rush you, I just wanted to try to gauge...
I understand. Okay, so enforcement was an issue for us this year, and that we did not go out and patrol like we have in previous years. This would be the second year that we have done this. This would be the second year that we have done this. The issue we have, and let me give you some background on the fire marshal's office if you have time. When I first started with the fire marshal's office, almost 26 years ago now, all our deputies in the fire marshal's office had been through at least a reserve academy for law enforcement training. And when you go through that, you obtain a certain skill set. You have better situational awareness of what's going on and how to respond to it. Over the years, the ability to get that training for our new people coming into the office has slowly gone away, to the point now where the county no longer has a reserve academy or a reserve unit. So we have people in our office that don't have that skill set any longer. Also, society has changed. We have noticed in the years leading up to these last two years that we've had a lot more incidences where we're out there doing these enforcement actions, where we're getting major pushback from people. And that coupled with the sheriff's challenge he has right now with staffing levels, we the risk is not equaling that to the benefit that we're getting from our patrols out there that we're doing. It's a matter of time before one of us gets hurt dealing with these enforcement.
We don't want that. And the sheriff's here, and I didn't want to, I actually thought the sheriff was going to be part of this presentation, but I'm seeing head shaking, no. So, and from my point of view, you know, we went year to year to year on this. And what I was seeing is, not as a criticism, but even when the council had wanted enforcement, what we were hearing is that fireworks weren't even confiscated. You know, if they were come across someone with them, they just got a warning. You know, back in the good old days or in other states, you know, law enforcement would actually confiscate them and fine them. And then the other part of that was, we were hearing that most of the fines that were levied were waived. Someone complained about it, they just said, oh, yeah, forget it. So there was virtually no enforcement that I knew of. And I understand the sheriff's continuing challenge with staffing. In fact, I meant to mention that. And our legislative priority will definitely hit on the Southwest Washington Academy and make sure it's robust and stands up in time. But we're, anyway. So I didn't see any statistics. We had seen them in years past where here's how many summons we issued, here's how many fines were collected. Do you have any of that data handy? This year for Clark County, Curtis, go ahead.
Okay. What I was able to come up with from the CAD data was that there were 48 total events responded to or otherwise handled, two verbal warnings and 46 other dispositions. And what that could be is anything from, it was taken as information. These calls went to a queue and stacked up in a queue. And because other things were happening in the county that take precedent over, say, noise complaints, they became stale and were just taking as information. There was nobody that actually had to go out there and. But let me tell you what that looks like. When we were out doing enforcement action out there, doing patrols, calls were coming in and stacking up in a queue on our mobile data terminals. We would have two to three cars on each side of 50th Avenue. So the west part of the county, Hazel Dell, would have a patrol area and then the rest of the east of the county. We would try to stay in the core of the urban area because that's where the majority of the calls would occur at. So we would self dispatch on a noise complaint, drive into that area, and there's nothing. Roll down your window, you could smell as the firework had gone off in the area. But what these folks that are the violators and outside of shooting times do is they run out, they shoot a firework and then run back in their house. So, okay, I have nothing here. We result that as complaint condition does not exist. Grab another call, go to that one. And it's the same thing. So we camp out in a neighborhood and then it's a cat and mouse game trying to catch these people coming out, shooting their firework, running back in the house. So that's why you don't have a lot of citations being written, is actually catching the person doing this is quite a challenge out there. When they, occasionally you would run into a family that, remember when we were having all the different shooting changes, the hours and days that you could legally use fireworks? We had north of 219th was one set of rules and south of 219th was another. So there was confusion in the public out there. So we took that into account when we would come across a family that was shooting maybe on the wrong day. They were cooperative. Yeah, we didn't cite those folks.
So I want to just add a comment here too, because, I mean, you may know, in prior life, I was a prosecutor.
Yes.
In another state. And enforcement was active and robust. I mean, even firecrackers, you know, if they were illegal and law enforcement came across them, it was an infraction or a misdemeanor. And they came in, a great number, into court all year round, but mainly around the Fourth of July. I mean, they were actively enforced and prosecuted. And above a certain size, you know, like our mortars, which many states control and only give, allow to commercial operators with a permit at a sanctioned event, they were considered bombs. So they could be charged, and we saw some of those, felony possession of explosives with large fireworks. So I don't know what we have here in Washington State. I hear, or I have never heard of any cases going to our district court or Superior Court regarding any seizures of this kind. I don't even know if Washington State prohibits it. I did research it a number of years ago, and I know they have a very different lack of control of these mortars that many states, in fact, have. So some of this issue is a state issue as far as some of the fireworks that are no doubt causing the fires that we're seeing. But any comments on that? Or Leslie, do you have kind of a summary? And I did have ultimately the question of why is it a year wait if we were to change any of these laws? And is there a portion that, okay, well, it's an emergency because of fire conditions, we could implement a fireworks change within, in less than a year time? I know that's controlled by the state.
Thank you, councillor Minogue. Do you have, I believe it's part of the code that says that it has to be a year before. Do you want to go back to slide three, Kristen? Because I think that is their legislative.
It's an RCW.
RCW.
Yeah. That requires the year-long wait.
So is there an exception to that? And so that's the question. And then for an emergency fire condition-based reason or, and then the second part of that question is, does the PA's office cite people into court on fireworks violations of any kind? Do you know of any?
Sorry, I don't know the answer to that question. I can certainly look into both of those questions and come back to the council with that.
So was that your last slide or do you have?
No, that's it.
Do you have other questions? Please.
I just have a comment because I was, I would really like to hear from the sheriff and the fire chiefs. We've got a couple of fire chiefs here today. Maybe we don't have time today, but I don't feel, I feel like we need to figure out some next steps related to this. It's a complicated issue and I don't, you know, this, this report, and thank you for this report today, but it just, to me, feels like it's raised more, more issues that the council should grapple with. And I think as a follow-up, it would be good to get the perspective of the fire chiefs and the sheriff and maybe the Vancouver sheriff as well.
And I agree to that. And I guess a final question for me to use, do you have recommendations today as a result of this presentation?
As far as the enforcement piece of it, the city of Vancouver has developed a model over the years where at one point they were hiring in armed security to ride with them. They did that for a few years, and that has gone away, and I'm not sure why. But I think now they actually have VPD officers that, they either ride with the VPD officer or the other way around. I'm not sure how that plays out. But I believe that's the way they functioned this last year. I can't speak for the sheriff, but we would certainly like to approach that. I think that's a way, they may have to hire back over time or something to make that happen. I know they're strapped on deputies, but.
And I may be misremembering, so the sheriff can correct me, but I, and you guys, historically, it was the reserve deputies that would go out. The sheriff reserve deputies and the prior administration terminated that program based on some training and stuff. So that, that has changed that enforcement.
And they didn't ride with us. They were out in the areas with us, but they weren't actually, we weren't there together with them.
And then another thing that may have happened, the sheriff please come up, is I, the Limited Commission is also something that may have changed where citations may not be able to be made by our fire marshal's office and would have to be made by law enforcement for any citations. And I also believe, and I could be wrong on this as well, is that, and you kind of allude to this, you actually have to see the person doing it. So if you get a call and you go out and it's done, it's kind of hard to find out who actually discharged something that may have been illegal or outside the, or some additional information that I'm not sure if I have all corrected.
Got a couple of questions and then a comment. So back to, I forget which slide it was here, but were there any fires in the, you know, like the day before, the day of, and the day following that were not related to fireworks? Were there any fires that had started that were not related? And I was wondering if, you know, the response was slowed because of the other fires that were caused by fireworks.
I'm not aware of any that occurred. We would have investigated any fires that occurred in structures within the county.
All right.
I'm not aware of any that were slowed down because of those other responses that.
So then I have a kind of a comment and maybe a potential suggestion. I just, I remember when I was young, when I was a kid, I mean, less than a teenager, and we would come to Vancouver specifically because there were fireworks allowed here that weren't allowed in Portland. I grew up, was grew, was raised in Portland. And so this is an issue where we very much are affected by the rules and the laws of neighboring jurisdictions. So I think this is, that is something that we really need to consider. I would imagine that, I mean, I drove through, you know, I live in Vancouver city limits and so I drove east on Highway 14. And, I mean, granted, there's not quite as much population on Highway 14, but it was one-way. And then I ended up driving up into Hazel Dell. And it's like, as soon as you cross that border, it was like a war zone, you know? So we are very much affected. And I would imagine that there were a lot of people from Vancouver that wanted to release fireworks coming into the county to do so. One of my questions or kind of suggestions would be, can we put together like a task force with various experts in the field that can kind of work together to advise us on this issue?
I'm not sure, but I was thinking a next, maybe an immediate next step. And I'm not sure if we have the, our schedule for another work session, but just to fully get the scope of the issues, because we've talked about fire, but there's many more issues and impacts that the community feels from fireworks. And the lens that I look at all of this is public safety, but just an initial next step might be to have the sheriffs and the fire chiefs come back and talk about this a little bit further.
So I don't know that we need a task force, but I do agree we should hear from the fire marshal's chiefs, sheriff. Look into the criteria issues. Should they be amended? Should the chair not be able to overrule that criteria? Issues of that kind. I think we have more work to do that we don't need. I mean, we have a lot of capacity and experts right here. And some of this, to your point, is some of my response to a lot of constituents, some of this we can't fix. You know, as long as the state allows mortars and as long as the reservations, if you will, sell pretty much whatever they want and that material leaves. I mean, I grew up like you. I mean, I grew up on the East Coast. Pretty much everything was illegal. And you could have sparklers, but everyone, every community, I mean, there are every golf course, football stadium, they all had fireworks that people went to as a community, as a show. And then they were, they were performed and then they were ended. And the nearest place you could go, and I grew up in New Jersey, you know, people would, not me, because I didn't have a car and I couldn't drive yet, but people would go to, like, North Carolina or South Carolina or Georgia. And I had to travel a great distance, but it greatly reduced the amount of illegal fireworks available. You know, as to your point, you know, Portland and Vancouver are right next door in Easy and it happens. And we have, you know, tribal lands nearby, which I'm assuming if we made changes, I'm just throwing it out there, and we had a presentation on safe and sane a number of years ago by the county staff. You know, I would hope that the tribes would join us. Otherwise, we won't see any progress at all unless there's robust enforcement. And I know the sheriff doesn't want to get into that business. And you certainly need to be safe and don't have the capacity. And I'm hoping our reserve sheriff force comes back at some point. But, so I think we have the makings of another work session already before we start talking about a task force.
And based on your schedules through the rest of the year, are you comfortable with having the work session after the first of the year? Or is this something you want before the end of the year? Because we're pretty tight.
I think as, as long as, if we have the ability to maybe make some changes, that it be done before the next Fourth of July and knowing that nothing's going to change the next Fourth of July, but then we would be poised, if we make any adjustments, to have some changes in place the Fourth after that. And perhaps we could just provide you with the issues, some of the issues that each of the council members have.
You're okay with going into the next year?
I'm okay, yeah.
Yeah, and I hear about the Fourth of July. I'll also note that, you know, New Year's Eve is also the same provision. So with not having it before the end of the year, it would not be, any changes would not be in effect for December 2024 as well. So that's the only.
You okay with that, Claire?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. To me, it's less of an issue for New Year's anyway. So I, we've got a lot on our plate. I think this is something that can wait until the New Year.
And if, councillor, if you want to send us your questions, then what I'll do is I'll put that on a council time discussion to make sure that everybody is aware of what is being requested and to see if we have buy-in on all of that or if there's anything that's missed.
Yeah, I would say the fire hazard may be down on New Year's Eve, but the impacts to like livestock, there's a number of horses that, you know, injuries that happen just because of the noise and veterans. And there's still a lot of impact. So we may, I think we need the time to fully consider this, so I think it is going to slip into the New Year. And, you know, one issue that I have is I'm concerned about first responders being so tapped out responding to fireworks, they're not able to timely respond to medical emergencies. So that's a big concern of mine.
So are we okay to move on?
Just one more comment real quick. One of the things that I would like to understand too is, and I appreciate what you did bring to us, but I think there are a lot of other costs that come into this, like how much, how much money, you know, did CRESA, the resources from CRESA, you know, expend during that time? So things like that, just a little expansion on the data. And then talk about legislative. And then talk about legislative priorities, a hundred dollar, a hundred dollar permit fee. I don't know what to say. I mean, I don't know why the state would have a cap on that, so I don't know. I'd love to look into that.
So I think we have concluded the work session. Thank you very much for the hard work and, um, giving us this insight. Any concluding comments?
Thank you, councillor.
All right, we'll go ahead and conclude this workshop then and, uh.